Good afternoon, everybody. We call this meeting to order. First order of business is a proclamation for General Aviation Appreciation Month, and I'd like to invite the Airport Director, Phil Ridenhour, to receive this proclamation.
How are you doing?
Thank you. This is on for General Aviation Appreciation Month, September 2014. Whereas general aviation and community airports play a critical role in the lives of our citizens as well as in the operation of our businesses and farms, and whereas a 2013 Maryland Economic Impact of Airports study found that the annual economic impact of general aviation in Maryland is $550.7 million. And whereas the state of Maryland has 36 public-use airports, serving 7,782 pilots and 2,774 general aviation aircraft, general aviation supports 6,274 jobs across the state. And whereas Hagerstown is proud to be home to the Hagerstown Regional Airport, in 1928, Creeter Reisner purchased 60 acres of farm owned by Robert and Emma Brumball, which became home to the City of Hagerstown Airport. The property, now known as Hagerstown Regional Airport, is located approximately three miles north of Hagerstown and has grown in size over the years. It is among the oldest continuously operating U.S. airports in history. And whereas Hagerstown is proud to play a role in aviation history, as well as provide both public and private aviation services to the community, now therefore be it resolved that with the support of the City Council, I, David Geisberts, the Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby proclaim and recognize September 2014 to be General Aviation Appreciation Month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Would you like to talk about some of the activities up at the airport?
Sure. I will say that what started out, what started out as that 60 acres is now about 700 acres at Hagerstown Regional Airport. It is responsible for about $109 million in business revenue, $74 million in personal income, and about $7.4 million in state and local taxes. It also generates about 1,300 jobs as a result of the airport being there. We're very happy to host that service, very proud of the things that we have accomplished at the airport, look forward to additional accomplishments in the future. General aviation is a large part of our operation. We also have commercial service there hosting Allegiant and Sun Air. So, things are going very well at Hagerstown Regional Airport, and we appreciate your support and appreciate the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right.
Oh, photo, of course. I bet she says one more.
She didn't say it.
I guess we're good with one take. Next item is our preliminary agenda review, so if everyone will get their packet out. Just review the schedule for October. We will have work sessions on Tuesday, the 7th, the 14th, and 21st at 4:00 p.m., and then Tuesday, the 28th, will be our regular session at 7:00 p.m. We'll have a guest who will present a proclamation from Hagerstown, Indiana. And on the consent agenda, under the DCED, we have an application for windown Maryland Theater event on October 17th. I think that's the one where I'll be carving pumpkins. The Barbara Ingram School for the Arts Foundation's Street Lamp Holiday Program. Any questions on those two items? Yes, sir?
Street lamp holiday program. I saw where they're proposing, if I understand it, they're proposing to put names on the streetlights.
We've done this for the past three years.
Temporary.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they're the signs.
You were answering my question.
So someone basically adopts a street lamp.
For the duration of the thing.
Yes.
You're answering my question.
Yes.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I just, I didn't want to make sure it wasn't something like the theater seat program because then, you know, there wasn't enough of an outlay for that. But this is very worthwhile cause and I think it's the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Mimi. Thanks, Karen. Under the Police Department, several items. Number one is tasers and taser cartridges. Any questions on that item? Network cameras, Skyline Technology Solutions. Any questions on that one?
No, not on that one.
The HPD's second-floor building renovation. Any questions on that? Next is the mobile police radios.
Yeah, I had a question on that. Is that all city money or is there any grant money in that? I didn't see any grant money on the, on the app, on the form, contract form.
All city money.
It's all city money. Okay. The question's answered.
Number five is mobile data terminals for new cruisers. Any questions on that? Under the Department of Utilities, we have wastewater grinder pump. Buy a lot of those grinder pumps, don't we?
Oh, that's an ugly long story.
Don't do it again, Lou, please.
We also have a 2014 utility vehicle purchase.
Technical, technical question. It says four-wheel drive. Does that mean four-wheel drive or does it mean you're open to all-wheel drive? Although I see you've already picked one, you've already picked the, what you want.
It's actually all-wheel.
It's all-wheel because it's described as four-wheel drive, which is different.
Do you remember? The last one we got was all-wheel, but we didn't know it was designated as four-wheel. It's that, excuse me, it's that limited slip where it's running two wheels and it slips 6% and the other four wheels.
That's all-wheel drive.
Yeah. I think that's what that one is. I can verify.
It says four, it said four-wheel, I think, in the specs. I just wondered because Jeeps are one of the only brands now that are offering four-wheel drive. Hardly anybody else is. Some trucks are. This is a utility vehicle, right?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Well, I just hope you aren't paying.
I'll verify and make sure to you.
Okay. I hope you aren't paying for something we don't need.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. Parks and Rec, replacement of alley mat for alley 5-10 and alley 5-37. Any questions on that? All right. And then under unfinished business, we have the approval of an ordinance amending Chapter Approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 25-1. Those are two brought by the chief. We also have the approval of the Antietam Cable franchise. I'm sorry, I skipped one. We also have the approval of the ordinance, Chapter 70, cable television and open video systems. Approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 232, vacant commercial structures, and amending 233 vacant residential structures. Those are all in line with neighborhood support. Any questions on the unfinished business?
We're talking about that one later, right?
Correct. The new business will have the introduction of an ordinance amending the city code for curfew. That's where we're increasing the age. Any questions on that? Item B is the approval of a resolution approving and supporting U.S. Bicycle Route 11. Any questions on that one?
Rodney, I think that somebody emailed me a question about that. I think I sent you an email. I'm not sure whether you had a chance to follow up with them.
I don't recall that.
It was either that one or the Pennsylvania Avenue one.
Oh, yes.
Was it the same one?
It's not, it's on Pennsylvania Avenue. That issue was about where we're putting the bike lanes in, about the parking being removed, but the particular person that emailed, we weren't affecting their parking.
Okay.
So, yeah, we did follow up with them.
I will comment that I think it's very, I know it follows the general direction of U.S. 11, but I think it's very confusing to call it U.S. 11 when it's not on U.S. 11 much at all, really.
The route numbers have been established by Ashtoe, and, for example, there's some other places where that's the same, where U.S. Bike Route 111 follows U.S. Route 1. There is different, the map that we provided in your packet, there's, well, the map that shows the part of going through the city, the route shield up in the upper right-hand corner, that's, it would be distinctive from the normal state and U.S. route shields that you have to better make that distinction, but yes, it is.
But the memo says U.S. Bicycle Route 11, so it's still awfully confusing. I think people would, would go out to the Williamsport Pike, Pennsylvania, I mean Virginia Avenue, et cetera, because that's U.S. 11 and Burhands and all that.
Right. When, part of this.
I know it's not your doing, but I just.
When this is a national effort to designate bike routes, I just saw that the CNO canal is going to be Bike Route 50.
Correct.
Route 50, right?
I understand.
Along those lines.
Well, this one's close enough. It goes through the city ironically, which U.S. 11 does, and it's not on U.S. 11 anywhere when it goes through the city.
It's for the careful readers of the signs.
Okay, well, it's all right. Yeah. I was, I was going to have an issue if it was on U.S. 11, but it's not, so.
At least not in Maryland, it is not.
No, I saw that. Okay.
All right. Items.
There you go.
Go ahead.
Don't. Never mind.
Item C, under new business, is the approval of a resolution authorizing a three-year contract with the fireworks extravaganza. So, it's 2015 through 2017. Any questions on that? Item D is the approval of a resolution, Sustainable Maryland, which we'll be learning more about tonight. Item E is a license agreement for eastbound downtown gateway signs. Any questions on that? Item F, the approval of a memorandum of understanding for the arts gallery.
This is Nopo, right?
Right. Studios at Nopo.
I want to acknowledge Bispa's assistance as a conduit for the grant. Certainly appreciate the money coming to us from Citigroup.
Item G is the approval of an after-school program at the Robert W. Johnson Community Item H is the approval of MELP release and settlement agreement, which we'll also be talking about tonight. Item I is the approval of Catalyst Project Number Eight, authorizing two new full-time positions to support neighborhoods through the vacant structures program, which we'll be also talking further in today's work session. Item J, approval of a contract for street trees. Any questions on that? Item K, approval of a purchase for 2015 Ford Interceptor police vehicles. Any questions on that? And item L is the approval of an implementation of a 401A plan to the city's deferred compensation program. Any questions on that item? All right. Thanks for that. Of course, if any questions arise in the next week, you can always consult the staff That brings us to item three on our work session agenda, the WLR Holding Company, first third city center grant application.
Good evening. I'm going to pass out the application that was reviewed. Good evening. I'd like to introduce here with me tonight Chad Bond, who is acquisitions and development manager for WLR Holding Group, Holding Company. They have purchased the building at the above Flying Pie, it's 43 to 45 South Potomac Street. And they have some major renovation plans for this building. In the memo, I described the, some of the scope of the work, and inside the application that I just distributed, there's a lot more information. To review quickly the process when the first third grant application comes in, the first third grant committee evaluates the application for completeness and compliance with the program goals, a site visit is scheduled so the committee can see and hear what the applicant proposes. Then the committee decides whether or not the application has enough merit to be presented to the mayor and council for consideration of funding. This is what happens with the large city center first third grants. If approved by the mayor and council, a letter of commitment is given from the city to the developer, which obligates the requested funds to be paid upon completion of the project according to the established scope, timeline, and proven expenditure of funds. With that process in place and in action, we bring to you WLR Holding Company and their plans at 43 to 45 South Potomac Street. I'm going to let Mr. Bond run through some of the, some of the scope of the project, just so you know what is, what he and his company plan to do with the property.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hello. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. So, I think everyone's kind of familiar with that property and the condition that it's in, and we at WLR feel there's a great opportunity there for improving the building itself as well as the rear parking lot. Currently, Flying Pie and Murphy's Pub have drainage issues due to the condition of the rear parking lot, as well as the main sewer line going out of the building. Improving that, helping them out, and then the 12 units above Flying Pie are in poor condition, and trying to rent those out to individuals, respectable individuals, is, it's not going to happen. So, we would like to renovate these units, you know, acquire, you know, city officials, employees of the city, downtown professionals to be able to come in and rent and live downtown. So, some of the renovations we're looking to do, right now they are configured as, there's six of them that are three bedrooms, two full baths, and six of them that are two bedrooms, one full bath. The three bedrooms are very small. I don't, I wouldn't consider them three bedrooms the way they're laid out right now. So, our plan is to change them all to two-bedroom, one-full bath, upgrading everything, flooring, appliances, you know, putting dishwashers in, making them friendly and attractable to model citizens. New windows throughout the building, other than the storefront itself or the Flying Pie. Roof repairs, there were some leaks in that roof that start this four-story building, and they go all the way down to Murphy's Pub. So, repairing the roof, what else here?
Washers and dryers.
Yep, washers and dryers in each unit.
Central air conditioning, do they?
Yes.
So, the folks at Flying Pie won't have to worry about the air conditioner dripping on them when they sit outside anymore?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's a frequent complaint that I get.
Yes. And another complaint that they, that they've had, and we're going to insulate the ceiling of the Flying Pie to separate soundproof from those first-floor tenants. Been talking with Greg, the owner, they've had some complaints in the past. So, you know, it's successful for us if they're successful, so we want to do everything that we can to keep them happy.
So, in total, looking at renovating over 800, 8,400 square feet of residential space into very attractive residential, complementing and upgrading the commercial component on the first floor for a total project cost of about $792,550. You'll see in the application the scope of work, the project management software that WLR uses to keep track. This is, this is refreshing for us to see. It's, they are certainly on top of it. Staff has made a, has visited some, another, two of their other sites in Frederick County, and came back with very positive reviews of what they saw as far as attention to detail and quality of finishes and the like. With a total project cost of $792,000, that makes them eligible to apply for a grant of $250,000 payable upon completion, but committed to upfront. And with your permission, we'd like to see if we could get this on the agenda for the meeting next week. It wasn't on the preliminary agenda, but we'd like to see if we could accomplish that
Mr. Alshar?
For me, this is, I think, the second instance in which we have considered the larger first third program for a primarily residential purpose. And I would reiterate my past comments that I struggle a bit with the notion that what I envisioned would be more of a commercial-oriented, you know, fund going toward renovation of residential units. Even, even with it being in the core, I see nothing in here that would preclude those residential units from becoming comparable, should, you know, should, should the process be set it to other subsidized units within our core. There's nothing in here that precludes that from happening a year and a half down the road, and then the end result is that we're largely no different than what POA did with Washington Gardens and what Housing Authority proposes to do with Nolan Village and et cetera. And that's, that isn't what I envision this funding being used for, and I certainly respect that the application clearly intends that it isn't going to be, but at the end of the day, I want some assurance that I can look to the taxpayer and say that that is not going to be the case. And this, for me, and I'm very familiar with these apartments, by the way. I had a friend live in there, and you certainly have a challenge ahead of you, and I think not only a challenge for structural redevelopment, but I think a challenge for filling them with, you know, non-subsidized rent-based applicants, frankly speaking.
Mr. Muntzen?
Chad, first. Thank you for your interest in improving downtown parks.
Yes, sir.
We need more of you. And if you continue to be interested in public outcome of urban buildings, we'd like to show you.
Sure.
Let me just ask you this. Do you anticipate that your rents will run, unless they're all included?
Mike. Yeah, it's Mike.
Turn your microphone.
What do you anticipate?
That your rents will run?
Our anticipated rent would be $800 a month plus utilities.
I'm sorry, say it again.
$800 a month plus utilities.
Oh, okay. 800 a month. It's going to take some fairly professional people.
Sure.
To, to, to support that. But that's a pretty fair rent for professional people. Okay, now, let me, let me ask you this. I want to follow up on this. There's been a lot of talk in this council and in our, among our staff about student housing.
Mm-hmm.
Do you see this fitting in any way with, with student housing?
Sure.
Well, in the application, you've actually identified University of Maryland students as one of your target populations.
Sure.
Yeah. And with a washer dryer, if you had two students living there, that'd be $400 a month each.
That's, it would be affordable then.
And that would be pretty affordable. That's less than what they pay out at Youngstown or out by HCC where most of them seem to live.
Well, this looks to me like it's a really good step in the right direction. If I were a student.
Sure.
I think living above a pizza place would be a great, a great opportunity.
Sure, that's a positive.
And so, I very much support you on this.
Thank you.
For coming forward and, and making this offer. $792,000 is still a lot of money in this day and age.
Sure, sure. And I, and I appreciate it, and, you know, our goal is to improve the properties that we purchased in Hagerstown, and, you know, fortunately, at the end of the day, money's money, and, you know, without certain help, probably won't happen, and.
We understand that. That's why we have these programs.
And I appreciate it.
Will they be eligible for other assistance programs?
The Partners in Economic Progress Program, PEP we call it easily, is, they've already been applied for and have been approved for that program also. And that program comes with other benefits, some which don't apply to this property because it's not, there's, there's not office space, but the fast-tracking of permits and some reduced permit fees and some other things do come into play for him. That's approved with the DCED review team, and they were, they were approved there for that program.
And you're going to be ready to go in about nine months?
We'll be ready to go within the next month or two.
I think he means completion of the project.
Completion. When you start renting.
Correct.
About nine months. That's very good. John, you got to show him the rest of our inventory.
Yes. He, they've, there'll be some other news coming out of WLR soon, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brubaker?
Following up on Kristen's concern, is there any provision resubsidized beyond our internal subsidized that apply to these units? Restricting future use, because we've put money in and infamous Section 8 and so forth.
Right. We don't have any other restrictions in place, nothing other than, everything has to be built out to a certain standard, but, but not, there are no strings tied to what happens with the property afterwards, if that's what you're, yep.
Second of all, again, as a follow-up question, what, I know we've approved at least one office, and there's a residential, what's the other residential that was being referred to for the first third program? We've approved an office building, I know.
We approved an office building on West Washington Street, and then also, the other one was the Junior Fire Company on North Potomac Street.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, I remember that one. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I don't recall when we approved the program that we limited it to commercial office. I believe the intent was to increase property values.
It was increase property values. It was mixed use and commercial properties. In this case, the, the commercial component of 43 to 45 South Potomac Street has serious sewer problems out the back. The Murphy's Pub was open and then closed because they're having some, some problems with some, some things.
So, this qualifies as a mixed-use building.
And the fire, the building overhaul, that was for social conferences and so forth,
wasn't it?
That's correct.
It wasn't residential.
No.
So, we've got three different types of approvals here.
All mixed, mixed-use types.
Mixed use, yeah.
I definitely think there's a market for what you're proposing here in terms of, you know, I met at the orientation for USMH students, and about 70 people a year move from the metro area to Hagerstown to join mostly the nursing programs, but the engineering, when those programs fill up at their home campuses. So, but when I polled the individual students who raised their hands, and they said they're all living out at Youngstown, and I said, "Well, would you live downtown if, you know," and they're like, "Yeah, if the rent was the same and I could find a place that was decent, I would certainly live downtown." They would prefer to live downtown.
Well, but once again, though, as we, we see whole buildings go to section, ledge, Section 8 and so forth, I'd hate to see buildings turn into dorms in effect, because, yeah, I'd like to see young adults that are earning spending money as well, you know. So, I have nothing against the college students, I just hate to see single-use residential buildings. And I am concerned that we don't have some kind of rider or something, some kind of deed thing about future subsidy. Now, I'm not talking, you know, I'm not saying I'm going to hold this up because of it. I'm not saying that, but I am saying I'm concerned about that aspect of it.
We can review that for sure, going forward.
Any comments from this side of the table?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I know what shape the building is in. I know people who lived in that building. It's a shame that we have not had businesses to be able to stay. Thank God the Flying Pie is there, and hopefully the pub gets going.
Sure.
I don't care what pot we get it from, as long as we get it. It's needed. Thank you again.
You're welcome. So, why, just on for a boat next Tuesday, and you're fine. It's all right?
It's all right?
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
We're going to have a ribbon cutting when it's all said and done?
Of course.
Okay. Or at least a tour, I'd like to, I'm nosy, I want to see inside.
That's a mayor kind of question. That's why I get some big bucks.
It's the golden scissors. All right. Next item is the City Center Residency Initiative.
Good afternoon. Some discussion here previously with Mr. Sargent and the representative from WLR mentioned talk of college students. And one of the things we wanted to discuss with the mayor and council, as the mayor and council have recently adopted some edits to our City Center Residency Initiative program, we were approached by representatives of, representatives of Hagerstown Community College to potentially discuss adding HCC students as an eligibility category for our City Center Residency Program. So just to kind of step back and do a quick refresher, in the spring, the mayor and council adjusted the City Center Residency Initiative Program with some boundary edits. And we also adjusted the rental subsidy portion to include a targeted area, which increased the existing subsidy of $150 a month for an eligible renter in the program to also have a priority area where a rental subsidy could be $300 a month. And since those edits, we've actually seen some pickup in activity of that program, the rental subsidy program, which was started along with a, also a housing down payment assistance program, was started in 2004. I think we roughly had 15 renters over the course of 10 years utilize the program. When the mayor and council made the edits in April, we had two existing renters in the program. Now we have, I believe, four units in the program with two, or excuse me, one more application pending. So that's some positive momentum from those updates. And as we continually look to enhance the program and see the program to be utilized to its maximum potential, we came across a conversation with some HCC representatives to discuss the potential of adding HCC students as an eligibility category. As discussed in the memo, the current categories where someone would be an eligible applicant for the program would be recent college graduates, somebody who's graduated from an accredited college within the last 12 months, an active member of the military, and we accept members of the military who've been honorably discharged within the past 12 months. Anybody who is a government employee, local, state, county, federal, would qualify. Anybody who is a full-time working professional with an associate's degree or higher would qualify. Household with an income of 80% of the median or higher would qualify. And then also USMH employees and USMH students qualify. So with that said, the USMH population, we have, I believe, students typically there with an enrollment of maybe 500. The HCC option was intriguing with such a larger base of students. I think it's roughly 5,000 to 7,000 that at any given time are enrolled at HCC. And be an opportunity to maybe have more college students utilize the rental subsidy program and also create, you know, a partnership between the city and HCC. So with that said, we wanted to discuss the concept with the mayor and council of adding HCC students to that eligibility category for the City Center Residency Program and see if there was any feedback or questions on that potential option.
If I can ask, when the current policy, the annual proposed policy, are students defined in any manner by way of full-time, part-time, amount of credits?
For USMH, it actually says for part-time students. And I think the reasoning there was USMH maybe has some non-traditional students.
Right, I have no problem with that. My, the only question I would have along that line is then defining what a part-time student is. I don't know if I would be agreeable to a subsidy for everybody at HCC who's taking, for instance, one course.
That would be me. I'm taking one class this fall.
Well, and just as importantly, there are a substantial amount of non-credit courses that are offered at HCC that one could construe themselves to be a student because they went out to take the guitar lesson class. It may even be a for-credit class. I just, that would be my only concern. I'd like to, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be open to part-time students at HCC. It's a question of how, how we want to word it. But I would be agreeable. Think it's a good idea.
The proposal says adding full-time HCCs.
Yeah, I think one of the things we looked at.
I think it could be extended to part-time if you define part-time at HCC correctly. And again, I, you know.
Part-time degree-seeking, perhaps?
Yeah. And, you know, there's one thing about having somebody with full-time, and maybe you couple it with employment, okay? Because what I'm looking at, and you mentioned quite appropriately, Mayor, that you're taking one class at HCC. You know, somebody who has a full-time job and is a part-time student is one thing. But somebody who has no employment and is going to HCC for one class a semester, that is not somebody who I would want to be qualified. So I think you could say full-time, full-time students if they're, full-time students or part-time students if they are fully employed.
And I would imagine full-time is defined by however HCC defines it, which would be probably 12 credits.
I would, I would think, we would define it, and I would think 12 credits is a definition.
It needs more work than that. Somebody who's pursuing, getting going somewhere rather than somebody that's taking a leisure course or... I don't know how to define it. We just brought it up. But I still am wary. They're going full-time, but they're taking one of those optional courses or, you know, a recreational course or, you know.
But I think full-time would have to be at least 12, at least 12 credits per semester.
Well, right, that's full-time. But what I'm hearing you say is if they have a full-time job and are taking any course there, they'd be eligible and...
I didn't say any course. I think you're, I think you're correct.
I think we need to define what that coursework is.
You could say part-time degree-seeking.
Yeah, I think the mayor, I think that is a very appropriate degree-seeking because you're not getting a degree from the kind of classes we're talking about.
And we would need the college to certify that, not the applicant.
Right.
And we have obviously some things to flesh out. What I think our goal was tonight was to see if the mayor and council were interested in the option.
I think it's a great idea.
And then we can work with HCC to...
Otherwise, I don't disagree. But I just want to make sure.
I'm pleased especially that we're creating this partnership with HCC for involvement in the city center. That's great.
Great idea.
Is there any, has there been any interest in this program from any of USMH students up to now?
We've, USMH is obviously aware of the program. We have not had, we have one USMH student who, we have some folks who qualify because they meet multiple eligibility categories. I think we have one active tenant who is utilizing the program, who's a full-time government employee, but they're also a USMH student. So we'd have one current renter. As far as any pending applications, I don't think there are any pending with other USMH students.
Okay, are you going to make any particular efforts to sell? No, let me ask this first, to limit, to limit this program to HCC?
As far as a cap on maybe the number of students, and that's a good point to bring up because a good problem to have would be to run out of funding for the program because we have people utilizing it. We do have approximately, yeah. We do have approximately 35,000, 34,000 left in the budget for the rental subsidy program with the obligations that are currently encumbered with the renters in the program now. And with, with that said, we, the staff are also seeking additional funding for the program, but it is something we can discuss as maybe a cap on the number of students.
It may be wise to look at that.
When you come back, could you give us some statistics on how many are using and what class they fall in? It'd be interesting to see.
How, and maybe you're not the right person, but we are working on a master lease with the, with the USMH. Do you know what the status of that is? Where they would sort of in effect guarantee so building owners could invest and here's some, I guess if, I wasn't trying to blindside you, but this brings up the subject of USMH.
Yes, and Catalyst Project, I forget which number, from the community city center plan talks about student housing. Right now, we're evaluating possible buildings. In the plan, it talked about how the buildings need to be in close proximity to the university, preferably either on Washington Street in that first block or on North Potomac Street. And there's two or three criteria that were spelled out. We're evaluating buildings to see where type of, that type of a project could easily happen. We're limited in the number of buildings that, that would meet that sort of criteria.
When you say you're evaluating buildings and those are the areas, I'm assuming you're not saying that those are the only areas. I mean, because I can think of a half a dozen buildings off the top of my head within two blocks of that, that, you know, would meet that level of opportunity.
Well, we can expand the area. The plan called for something in close, very close proximity.
You got a walkway straight through to Franklin Street from the university.
The most of the college campuses would take a two-block walk from the dormitory to the classroom.
Would be a luxury.
Yes.
So we are evaluating properties.
Okay. I just want to make sure when you say you're evaluating that whoever you're working with that you didn't go out and say, these are the two blocks, you got to fit whatever the idea is within. I'd rather us say, you know, here's the six-block radius.
Yeah, we just turn over property potential that wouldn't fit into that.
Well, I think what they're doing is focusing on that area first.
Yes, because, because it calls for three projects.
Because, because it's closest and then perhaps moving outwards if we can't make that work.
That was the thought in the plan. And it's to look for a four-unit building because the scope and number of units matter in terms of the demand for student housing as a designated student housing project. But we are working with USMH and I'll be getting with Mr. Halsey within the next two weeks to formulate some updates. And we can report back to the council on the progress.
How soon did you say?
Well, I'm going to be meeting with USMH folks in the next few weeks and we'll get you an update.
Okay, well, this is, I think, I think this is important to the university.
Yes, sir.
If, if they get the influx of students that they hoped to have in future years, the students are going to have to have housing and certainly downtown housing would be convenient and add, add to the activity in downtown and so on. So we need to, we need to really push that.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like there's support for the, expanding the residency initiative to HCC students with some minor tweaks in terms of...
No, that's fine. No, I just wanted to say, in looking at the perspective as dormitories, okay, I too would like to know buildings that have been bought recently and those that have been owned by people that may be under consideration. And the reason I want to know that is the ones that are, have been owned by people and they have not gone anywhere with this. I want to know exactly who these individuals are, okay? Because a lot of the buildings are like they are because they don't want to do the investment, but yet they have made money off of it. And I feel that some of these buildings may be there, okay? That's my personal feel.
You don't want to partner with somebody that's been sitting on it waiting for us to bring the down.
Correct, correct. This is very frustrating to me, okay? And that's what I want to know.
Yes.
Thanks, Kristen.
And for clarity, the, the concept's not a dormitory?
Well, I'm not saying, but it's for, you know.
I just wanted to clarify, the concept is to have four apartments.
Correct.
With the master lease. And then we would enter into a separate agreement with USMH to support this housing initiative.
And I think that the master lease approach, I think, at least for me, will answer some of my concerns about how you quantify an HCC student or a USMH student, you know, in that scheme of things. Somebody that's taken a one sort of un, you know, non-credit course isn't, I don't think going to fall within their parameters of what they envision any more than we do. All right, thanks.
HCC will, will come back at a future work session with additional, after additional conversations with HCC to try to flesh out some of the details for who would qualify.
Sounds good.
And just one other thing to add, during the mayor and council's edits to the City Center Residency Program over the past year, the mayor and council also had created a citywide down payment assistance program. Just wanted to report that we've had five people utilize that program buying older vacant structures for their home ownership. We actually have two more pending in the works waiting for settlement.
Nice. Good work, thank you.
Nice.
Thank you all.
Next up is Sustainable Maryland Certified Program. Our esteemed city engineer is here with Mike Hunninghake. Did I get it right?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon. Yes, Mike is here with me. He's from the University of Maryland. Some of you, I think, are already familiar with the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program. It's been promoted, and I guess it was actually part of the MML initiative, and you may have heard of it through there. But very basically, it's a certification program where as a community, you take certain actions, you do certain practices, you do certain things like that. And by doing those things, you can actually accumulate points on a score sheet that is in the, on this paper that's being handed out. If you get to 150 points, your community can be certified as a sustainable community. So a lot of other communities in Maryland have done this through MML. And Mike has a very short slideshow he'd like to show us, just to kind of give you a little bit more background, and then we can talk about the details of it. So I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. So thanks very much, Mayor and Council, for giving me a few minutes to talk about a program I think you'll be interested in participating in. Just following up on a more informal meeting with your mayor and Councilman Brubaker and your, some of your staff from a couple, about six weeks or so ago. So the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program, we have over 45 municipalities participating across the state that have registered with the program thus far. And this is basically a free and voluntary program for just incorporated municipalities who want to become more sustainable, go green, save money, improve their communities along a wide spectrum of areas. And it's a very unique program in that it helps municipalities choose a direction for the efforts that they want to take as it relates to sustainability initiatives. We help improve your access to resources that can help you complete these projects and initiatives, as well as measure your progress. And perhaps the most important thing is we're developing a network of municipalities that can share best practices with one another so that you don't have to reinvent the wheel and can model some of the things that you'd like to do in your community on what are going on in similar communities across the state. Our partners are the Maryland Municipal League. We also receive funding from Town Creek Foundation in Easton. And we are actually operated out of the Environmental Finance Center at the University of Maryland, which was set up, a dozen environmental finance centers were set up across the United States by the EPA about 10 years ago. Some of our specific action partners, and that's the flip side of that flyer, is our menu of actions that Rodney mentioned, various state agencies, various nationwide programs. I'm sure you're all familiar with Tree City USA, having been designated as such years ago and maintaining that certification. We also have an overlap and sometimes get confused with the Sustainable Communities Grant Program out of the Department of Housing and Community Development. That is very specifically a state grant program that you folks have already jumped through all the hoops that you need to do to get the funding for that. We actually, that's one of approximately 80 actions on our list that you can get points for. But we have partners, Maryland Association for Environmental and Outdoor Education. Those are the folks who certify green schools, which you have some in Hagerstown. So we have partners across the board there. So just an overview of the, of the program. It's been around for approximately four years. As I mentioned, we have more than 45 communities registered with the program to date. And as of two weeks ago Friday, we had, we have certified 22 municipalities. That list of 10 are the ones that we certified at the MML Fall Conference in Annapolis. They received, that's Tacoma Park there on the bottom right, receiving their award at the, at the opening session of the Fall Conference there. Five municipalities in Prince George's County, but also Boonesboro was the first in...
I can't believe Boonesboro beat us to the punch.
Well, I, you know.
Your mayor skipped.
There you go. There's a certain competitive nature to this program as well. So, and following up on that, there's your friends and colleagues in Boonesboro there. So as I mentioned, it's only available to incorporated municipalities. So there's eight towns and of course, one city, Hagerstown, eligible in the county. And Boonesboro did some great things in the last year and we were happy to... And Boonesboro did some great things in the last year and we were happy to recognize them in Annapolis. So, the guts of the program really is on this flyer, on the backside of it. This is the action, the menu of actions that we offer to communities across eight categories. Each action is worth a certain amount of points. And each action, and you can click on any of them on our website, has a very detailed roadmap of how to complete, complete it, from why it's important to your community, who to involve, what resources might be, need to be brought to bear, and then a very detailed sort of roadmap for completing these sorts of actions and the criteria that we require to demonstrate that you've done it. So, I would encourage you to go on the sustainablemaryland.com website and check this out a bit. And you'll see there's really, as I said, it's free, it's completely voluntary. The only requirements are adopting a resolution which simply says you intend to pursue certification. That can mean next year, that can mean three years, there's no time limit on that. The only other mandatory actions are creating a green team, which is essentially folks across the spectrum from elected officials, municipal staff, and perhaps most importantly, residents who can bring to bear their personal passions for some of these, these issues or their professional expertise from their day jobs. You already have put together the makings of a green team in some of the planning efforts that you've done in the city already. And then that green team puts together a very basic action which outlines sort of short, medium, and long-term goals that you'd like to pursue. And I know that some of your planning documents have already outlined that, that sort of plan as well. So, that's no problem. And then we ask that communities complete at least two of six of the priority actions that are sort of scattered throughout each of these, most of these categories. If a community demonstrates that they have completed 150 points or more worth of these actions, and that is done by uploading the documentation, whether it's a, a plan or photos of your farmer's market or your local business directory or by local campaign, all you need to do is demonstrate that you've completed this action to the criteria that we've established. We deem you to be Sustainable Maryland Certified and we make a big deal about that and share your examples, your initiatives with other communities across the state. Those are just a handful of actions that municipalities, popular actions that municipalities have taken over the years. We also encourage innovative projects. Each category allows for points for innovative demonstration projects. And those are the things we like to see communities do that will eventually become regular actions on our menu. So, right now, we've recognized some really innovative composting programs in the last year, municipal composting programs that save the town's money because it reduces their tipping fees and also engages residents. You know, one of the, the aspects of this program is strengthening the social fabric of communities, the sort of social, environmental, and economic pillars of sustainability very much include the social aspects of that. So, farmers markets, community gardens, those kinds of things that directly engage residents. So, those are just a handful of some examples that are very popular amongst communities. And then what we encourage municipalities to do is build on your assets. Now, I have a few photos from my most recent trip that do not begin to encompass the multiplicity of assets that Hagerstown has. As I know, mayor and councilman Brubaker, when I was up here last time, I was quite effusive about my affection for the town, having lived in a community like this and been on a planning board and a city almost this size in my past. It's got great bones and lots of potential and lots to build on. And you know what those, the assets are. You've been discussing those assets for the last several years and you know where you want to go with those. Those can all be incorporated into the action menu that you see before you. And then finally, so the benefits and some photos of some cheerful green teams from across the state. So, we provide, our office, the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program, has staff, myself and some others, who on a day-to-day basis provide technical assistance to green teams all over the state. Expanding ever outward, we are housed at the Environmental Finance Center, which very much has an amazing level of expertise to bring to bear to municipalities, especially in terms of stormwater and energy and as it relates to financing those types of infrastructure projects. Moving outward, we have connections to the various schools at UMD College Park who can bring to bear student and faculty resources to municipalities. And we have an extensive network of connections with state agencies and nonprofits across the states. We provide training for green teams and elected officials. And I should just say, we are going to be doing a program in Hagerstown on the 20th at the UMD facilities, sorry, November 20th, that will focus on leadership training in sustainability for county and municipal elected officials and senior-level staff. And you'll be hearing more about that in the next week and getting an invitation. That's November 20th and it's an all-day program, actually. It's quite an intensive program that we're planning to have for folks in central and western Maryland. We also will, on our new website that we'll be launching in the next month or so, we will have what we hope to be the most comprehensive grants portal for grants relating to sustainability issues all across the state at the local, county, and state, and even federal level. So, we'll be able to, we'll be a one-stop shop for looking for grants for these types of projects. I mentioned that we try to encourage municipalities to share the projects and ideas that they have been doing locally so that we can create a network across the state for folks to, to model their activities after. And we'd love to have Hagerstown be part of that. And finally, the statewide recognition, we really, Boonesboro will be, we've sent out press releases and have gotten lots of good media coverage for the communities that have gotten certified this year. And we like to tout what you're doing so that other communities sign up, get on board with these types of projects and can learn from what you are doing. I believe that is my contact details and I think that is my 10 minutes. And does anybody have any questions about what I have just mentioned so far?
I think it's a great program. I know we met, gosh, it's probably been a couple of months now, but appreciate you coming back.
Sure.
And I agree, I think we're already doing a lot of these things. And I think approving the resolution and just coming under the umbrella gives us that networking capability and possibly even access to grant funding and other sources of valuable information, so.
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Brubaker.
We talked about this before, I believe, I don't know if you know, I guess up here, getting more credit for our extensive recycling program.
Sure.
Which I don't see, and you're to work on that anymore.
Sure, and so.
Maybe it's a category I'm missing.
It's, yeah, well, so, you know, we have, we don't have a specific, just general recycling. We have things like implementing waste reduction programs, but a lot of the, a lot of the innovative composting and recycling projects that municipalities are doing fall under the innovative demonstration projects. If you folks are doing above and beyond what other municipalities are doing, that's where we give you your 10 or 15 or 20 points, depending on what you're doing. So, don't worry about that.
For instance, this fall, we're having a special thing for electronic. People could bring their electronic stuff. It seems to me that would fall under.
Definitely.
And we're pretty, and my second question is more directed at Rodney. Have you guys looked, I mean, I can just off the top of my head get us pretty close in this scoring. I think, you know, I've done that exercise before.
Easily over 100 points.
Sure.
Yeah. And I don't imagine we have to do much more in investment except for perhaps maybe reorient some of our procedures or something.
And, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I certainly don't see us having to expend a lot of money or anything like that to, a lot of these things are just programs we either need to tweak or we already have an effect, I think.
Right. So, I think we could, yeah, like I said, I think we're already doing a lot without your fine impetus, so.
Indeed, and we'd like to share that with our network of municipalities. And any new initiatives that you'd like to do, we'd like to be there to help you do it. And down the road, we'll be, we'll be looking to set the bar a little higher for municipalities, expanding it to two tiers, sort of a bronze, silver, gold type of thing, 150, 250, 350 points. So, we'll be, we'll be nudging you to, you know, to stay at a minimum at the level you're at, but also hopefully striving for even further goals.
And then we'd be the first city to get certified.
Indeed. There you go.
Mike?
Yes, sure.
How do you, who defines what an innovative demonstration project is?
Right. It's, it is, as you would imagine, it's sort of a broad category and it depends on which, what sort of project it is. Our, I should say, the way all of these actions are reviewed, are initially reviewed by our staff in the Sustainable Maryland Program and at the Environmental Finance Center. And then especially for the innovative ones, we have a whole network of external reviewers at state agencies, nonprofits, other environmental organizations, that we ask to review these projects and make recommendations for whether they're suitable and how many points we would assign to them. That's generally how it works.
Okay, thank you. Rodney, would this be a part of your office's responsibility, this program?
Yeah, I certainly don't mind heading it up, but I'll need help from all my fellow employees. I've already met with Mike Spiker because utilities already have a couple of these programs in place for what they do. And I'll need their help, but, and help from some other people like Public Works.
The buck's got to stop somewhere.
Yeah, I don't mind heading it up.
Is that with you?
Okay. HR, you know, we have a wellness program, so, you know, HRs would be involved in that. So, it would be a team effort. The buck stops here, Don, right here. Okay. And so, what I would just finally say is that once, once you folks decide to adopt the resolution and register with the program, I would coordinate with Rodney to come up and sort of kick off your, your green team effort, do a bit of training, explain the program to everybody and set you in motion. So, whenever we're ready to do that, I'm available.
So, just everyone's support putting this resolution on for next week? It's on our agenda already, assuming we got this. All right.
Super. Look forward to working with you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, thank you.
Next up is the MELP Release and Settlement Agreement.
It's a pleasure to be sitting up here this evening to discuss. Okay, you ready?
Yeah, ready. Move on, Mike.
I'm with you. We all know how long we've been working on this, specifically the last three years through two previous contract iterations, through the work of legal counsel staff, assistance of the mayor and council. We finally have a draft settlement agreement that I'm going to go through, actually about 15 points, so everyone understands what's in the agreement. And then we can open it up for discussion at that point in time.
You should have your crown on tonight. God knows you need one.
Thank you. You know, just, once again, it's 15 points, I'll hit them, hit them through and I know time's a little bit of a constraint tonight for us, but the Release and Settlement Agreement, it will be with Partners in Marketing. They're owned by Hagerstown Commodities. They have been chartered in Maryland, the state of Maryland as of July 2nd. So, once again, all the, all the documents will say Partners in Marketing. Property that we'll be getting is the old Lot 2 from the MELP, MELP plant. It's 2.9633 acres. It's actually listed, we used to call it 600 South Cannon Avenue, Partners in Marketing's Incorporated at 500. You'll see 500 Eastern Boulevard, which is their mailing address. When you look on S-Stat, there's actually no address on the, on the site itself. So, we have that covered through Mark and through the work we've done. First and foremost, as we've had numerous discussions, we're trying to protect the city's interests at this location. The 54-inch main wastewater hand-built collector runs directly through the property. We've had many discussions on the substations that are on the property, the easements, the overhead electric, Tom McAdison owns a substation, City of Hagerstown owns a substation. So, protective services is first and foremost on that. Last year, of course, we filed litigation in regard to eminent domain on the property in order for us to secure it, to protect all of those easements that we have on the property. This agreement will resolve the dispute, and I'll talk about that a little bit in the document itself as we address it. Our settlement of claims are for $650,000. This money will be utilized for the purchase of the property and for the remediation of the asbestos, which is within the facility, and for the remediation of the PCB contaminated water in the sub-basement in the newer portion of the building that was built approximately The closing settlement will be 60 days after completion with all of our terms of the agreement or July 1, 2015, whichever of the two would come first for us on that.
Is it 60 or 30? In the memo, it says 30.
Did I just say 60?
Yeah.
It is 30. I misspoke on that. It's, I have a number six beside it for sixth point, so.
It's okay.
Sorry for that.
Just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Demolition of the improvements, of course, Partners Marketing is responsible for the entire demolition of the facility in accordance with the city-issued demolition plan and demolition permit. The milars for the permit and the plan have been signed off by the city engineer, by myself for the Department of Utilities, Worcester County Soil Conservation, and we're working through the final issues in the permits department now. So, hopefully we have all of that clear. Everything will be attached into this document when we're ready to go. There was provision in there for demolition of city improvements. We do still own, as the property is divided, the old coal temple resides on City of Hagerstown property. Per this agreement, they will remove that. And it also is, has some minor contaminants on it. They'll dispose of that according with all of the MDE regulations and that'll be off of our property to make the site clean and whole for us. The asbestos abatement and the PCB abatement, both are done per MDE documentation, state and federal regulations. We will get an independent certified industrial hygienist report at the end to make sure that both of those are cleansed, that the site we're receiving has been cleaned up for all the contaminants that have been noted so far.
And I don't know if you clarified it previously, but our payment is conditioned upon receiving that.
That is correct.
Clean bill of.
From both of those entities, that is correct.
Just wanted to reiterate that.
Just for the record, how much has been taken out of the site so far?
I've been down, you know, as you all know, a couple of times a week. Right now, there's approximately 50 tons of asbestos has been removed.
50 tons.
50 tons.
That's a significant number.
Right, and of course, they wet that to remove it so it's not frivolous. That adds to the weight, but there's been at least four loads that have gone, these are full 55-foot tractor-trailer loads that have gone out of there. And they have pumped down, I believe, a half a million gallons of water out of the basement so far and have it filtered. So, they're making, making great progress on that. Additionally, for them to cover and fill the site, there's not enough fill for the bricks when that's all removed from the site into the, into the sub-basements. They're going to utilize some of the soil that is in the back of the property, which is owned by the city. That requires a separate permit. It's an NPDES permit, just like we have with the wastewater. That has not been completed yet by the state of Maryland. Once again, it's a separate issue from this, doesn't have to be attached, but we allow them, once they receive that NPDES permit, and it's at the end of the project when they move it, they do not need it right now. So, it's for fill later on in the spring and early summer for when they finally need that. Protection of facilities, we've touched on that before. They have worked with myself and my staff. For the work they've completed so far, they have protected the wastewater line through covering it with plates, bringing dirt over to cushion it. We have worked with them on the electric side, so to make sure that they're not close to any lines, remove some guys out of the way. We've kept the site lighting up for them. There'll be further work that'll be required there once they start removing the facility. As soon as this document's completed, we'll have a citywide meeting with them, lay out all the parameters, what they need, and get the timeline in so everything's taken care of when it should be on that for safety. Surety bond, working with Mark and their, their staff and their bond council, we have a $850,000 surety bond that we can exercise at the end of the project if things went into a default provision within the contract.
Good.
So, you look at the 850 and then we have 650,000 committed. If for some unknown reason something would occur, the city would have $1.5 million available to finish the project. We're covered with that. Once again, it's just to give us that comfort level, we're positive they can move forward with the way they're moving out.
Mike, how long is that bond good for? How long can, when can they demand that we release the bond? At what point?
We won't release the bond until settlement.
Settlement, okay. What about items that may not show up until after settlement?
We're relying on the certification, the two, from the two experts, independent experts, not employees of theirs, not people involved with the project, that the asbestos has been abated appropriately. abated appropriately, and that the PCBs have been decontaminated appropriately. Upon acceptance of those and settlement, at that point moving forward, we are responsible in holding them harmless for any additional problems on the property, unless it's something that they should have done under this permit and we find out later that they've done it.
Now, do we need releases from, let's say, MDE that whatever their requirements are have been met? Can we get that signed and certified?
We started down that road and asked for that, but MDE won't provide that for this project. That's why we've gone with the independent hydrologist opinion.
Okay.
They'll provide a certification.
Yeah.
And they won't give you a definitive answer?
That's surprising. I mean, they won't give us a definitive, I mean, by the end of the project, they'll be able to give us a definitive answer. It's really frustrating. Okay.
MDE and a closing of a permit, you know, there's a permitting process for them to remove the asbestos. You know, we have a few open permits with MDE that they've not closed now for three years, one of them being the consent agreement at the wastewater facility. Never been closed, they have no desire to close that with us. So it's not uncommon for MDE to leave these open-ended. Default provisions within the contract, fairly specific, Mark worked through the issues and got these in for us. Of course, you know, if we default, Partners in Marketing can bring suit against us. Our rights are the same, but we have the execution of the performance bond that we can rely on for anything that's not done. And I guess finally, most importantly, the agreements are all interpreted within the state laws of Maryland, which, you know, works well for us.
Explain what MYLAR is.
MYLAR? Yeah, it's the old.
It's an old-timers term.
It is, yeah. It was originally, it's a parchment-type paper, a naturally occurring substance, you can actually, it prints forever, easy to write on, it's not paper. It's more of a plastic feeling.
It's sort of drawings and so forth.
In perpetuity. We have MYLAR drawings from the '20s.
Yeah.
That's still, you know, very easily read.
Thank you for clarifying.
Keep them in the flat file drawer, keep them out of sight in the flat file.
Flat file.
Right, that's exactly correct.
Let me make a comment if I could. There aren't very many opportunities for a mayor and a city council to hit a home run, but I think this project is a home run. It took a certain amount of backbone, I think is the right word, for this mayor and the city council to make this move. People have been talking about this project for decades, not just years, decades. And when I was knocking on doors last election, almost two years ago now, this, with the exception of the stadium, was the most prominent, was the most prominent thing that came up from the people that I talked to. When we get rid of that old plant out there, it's an eyesore, it's a blight. And frankly, it took this council and its strong decision to go to court and this mayor to make it happen. And I think this is going to be a really nice accomplishment for this community, this overall community, when it finally happens. But Mike, we need to thank you. Mark, we need to thank you. Behind the scenes, you guys have done all the work, and your staffs, of course.
Yes, sir.
And others that I probably don't even know about. And this was not an easy process. The people that you had to deal with were very, very difficult to deal with. And congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And this is a big deal.
Including the mayor council.
That's what I, that's what I was saying.
This is a big deal, and it is a home run.
Thank you. Mr. Alshar?
In the Release and Settlement Agreement, you specify that the, this is now on page 2, now therefore witnesses, consideration of foregoing recitals, payment of $650,000, that's the total. And then you go down to point 1, so it says as follows, agreed to as follows, point 1, point 2, and point 2 is settlement of claims, and it talks about transfer title. Okay. 225, okay, the city shall also pay, okay. Never mind, I was looking for the 400, because the way I read it first, it was like 650 and just the 250.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that it was clear that the numbers are different. And the reason I say that is because I think that, you know, some of our concern, and probably rightly placed, was from the outset, folks are going to see a property that we basically gave away, and that property owner turns around and sells it. And then we turn around for much more than we gave it away for, and we buy it back, and we buy it back for 400,000, and, you know, the headline will read, you know, "City pays 400,000 to buy its own property back." What they'll miss is that we are taking down a building, which is clearly the, you know, the worst building in this city, hands down, the worst building in this city. Environmentally, structurally, you name it, it's the worst. Vagrancy, it's had it all. I think the focus, though, has to be on that 250,000 and not the 400,000, because what we're doing, in essence, is we're removing an obligation, and we can argue this point till the cows come home, that is rightly placed ours, that we created. You know, no private business went out and built this building. They didn't run this electric plant on a private level for 60 years. We did that. We built it, and it's no different than a landfill or any other thing like that where we have to properly manage it. And one of the things we really didn't do over that, you know, 50 or 60 years, or whatever the timeframe was, was plan for a post-closure cost, the way that they do with landfills and things like that today. And so this 400,000 is really our post-closure cost. I mean, that's what it is. And the 250,000, when you talk about the amount of tonnage of asbestos and the amount of bricks that's going to have to be cleaned and removed, and, you know, Lou, I'm sure your brother could go on for days on the, you know, the processing of metal and things like that, for $250,000 is a deal.
Agreed.
It's a deal, I mean, there's no other way to slice it, and that should be the victory, I think, that the public allows us to celebrate, is that we're removing an obligation that is ours, you know, and I swear that we generally created for a very, very good price.
Agreed.
And to me, that property is nothing more than a lock on the door, so to speak, of any opportunity for redevelopment of the East End. That's what it is. It's been a lock, you know, everybody sees it, and says, there's no way I'm going to build something around that place because of that specific lock. And I think, once that's opened, I think that the doors of opportunity for redevelopment of East End will open once it's gone, so.
And if I might add, you talk about $250,000 being a bargain. The reality is, this city, for at least three administrations, at least, at least three administrations, has been actively working on getting this done. Certainly based upon the initial estimates at the outset, 650,000 is a bargain.
It is.
And our citizens also need to know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we talk about this mayor and council, we negotiated down. Past administrations had put more money on the table.
Twice as much.
Twice as much, and it was turned down. So if people want to think that 650 is too high, it is far from being too high. It is, it is literally millions of dollars less than the initial estimates that came in three administrations ago, and it is also literally hundreds of thousands of dollars less than had been previously offered for the, actually, I'm not even so sure that it'd been involved getting the product that we're getting now. So this has been an achievement, but the eggs are there, and when they hatch, I will be very happy when we see a nice, level, demolished property. And I agree with Kristen, it is the beginning of the opening up of East End redevelopment. There is no question about it.
Can we go back for clarification? Because when this property was handed over, basically for nothing, was in fact when First Urban Fiber, is that correct? Came on?
Correct. 1994.
Okay. I loved it, Bruce, Bruce should know too.
Yeah, for $1.
Yeah, okay, but it was, that was the connection.
That is correct.
So everybody needs to be aware of that, all right? That's exactly because I would say that the city felt that the investment with First Urban was going to be something to be good, and unfortunately, it didn't happen.
It did not happen.
So, that's, and this is where we're at now, by trying to get it cleaned up.
And anybody, anybody out there that thinks that getting rid of a property for a dollar absolves you from any obligation to it.
Correct.
Needs to go talk to the 73 owners that are negotiating reconciliation of the property at Central Chemical, because none of one of them got off the hook any more than a property like this in which we're.
Yeah.
And the fact that the city will be able to acquire a clean property.
Yes.
That, you know, we will not be on the hook for unforeseen expenses related to the demolition and remediation of the property, I think, is another victory for us. It's more certainty than anything. Please.
To summarize, in my head, why I did it, which is a synthesis of what people have already said, and I've been a skeptic about valuation, a strong skeptic about valuation of this property, but here's what convinces me. We get a demolished property. What people need to understand, we don't buy it unless it's demolished, unless the environmental issues have been rectified. Property has significant environmental issues. And then finally, as the mayor just said, we get a clean piece, you know, graded, you know, planted, the whole bit, a clean piece of property. Those three things, for this amount of money, I think is a good value and with the ultimate results, so. And the various guarantees that, I made a joke a while about us being the difficult people Mike had to deal with, but at the same time, we sent him back saying, we need to close that loophole, we need to deal with that, and they went back and did it. So we get the credit.
Absolutely.
But we were sending them back because various ones of us would see problems with one aspect or another, and now these bullets, as far as we can see, clean that up. So we appreciate it, and.
Very good work.
But I think our difficult, difficult behavior was productive.
Absolutely.
Very productive in this case.
It is a proud moment for the city of Hagerstown.
It is indeed. It is indeed. Kristen said it quite well. It was the ugliest building we ever had in the city of Hagerstown. It was a disgrace.
Can we have a ribbon cutting?
And we're going to get rid of it.
We actually have settlement? We'll do a ribbon cutting for a blank piece of property, a green field?
And if, and if you can put a canoe there for the mayor.
Yeah, there you go.
That'll make it complete, right?
I'll ride all the way down to the Potomac, just for MELP. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Of course, it'll be on the 30th then for.
And we're good with just a resolution? We're good on that?
Yes, it will be approved by resolution, because the council has already authorized the acquisition of the property when we passed the ordinance last year, authorizing the acquisition of property through.
Through eminent domain.
The litigation.
Gotcha.
So it is appropriate for a resolution.
Excellent.
There'll be some attachments, Mike, that you'll get for the agreement.
Yes, sir, we'll have the, we'll have the bond documentation, of course, we'll have the settlement agreement, demolition plan, we'll have lawsuits.
And by the way, I think, difficult as negotiations have been, the other party has cooperated, and we have reached an agreement. So I want to give my thanks to them for bringing this along and working with you all in the end to.
Good point, to bring this up, I really do.
More will attest to that.
We've had our issues back and forth, but thanks for agreeing to this.
They've done a good job in addressing a lot of our concerns.
So I want to send out.
Yeah, and we'll mention, Bob Crestline is the legal counsel we've worked with for years, and he's worked.
Sometimes it's good to sue.
Well.
Okay, well, what you just said now, Don, it's on Don, okay? Okay, and moving on?
Item 7, City Center Community Plan.
We are, we are back to continue discussions on the vacant structures program revisions that we proposed prior to the vote to adopt at the next meeting. At our last meeting, much of the discussion revolved around the issue of property ownership and who's accountable for property conditions, particularly during foreclosure proceedings. Since the last meeting, staff conferred with the city attorneys to be sure that we were all on the same page on this issue, and the city attorney has maintained that it is permissible, under the appropriate circumstances, to pursue mortgagees, the lenders, for violations of the city code regarding condition of properties and compliance with other property-related regulations. Our definition of owner, and we've tweaked it a little bit, but our definition of owner includes a party which has a legal or equitable interest in the property and/or exercises control over the property. And we have Jason Morton here, who can answer any questions about that issue, and we also have Bill Nairn here, who can answer questions, because you said last time you would like someone to report on how foreclosure proceedings work in Maryland, and Mr. Nairn is the expert on our city team on that issue.
If you'd like, I can do about a three-minute summary of how the foreclosure process takes place. The first step is notice has to be given to the property owner 45 days before suit can be filed of an intent to foreclose. At that point, well, I'm sorry, the, and that notice has to indicate the nature of the default, the amount owed, who the holder of the mortgage is, because a lot of times these are transferred around or sold, and so that the owner has an opportunity to contact the lender and try to, to work out a payoff or a resolution before suit is filed. Once the 45 days is up and the borrower is at least 90 days in arrears, then the actual suit to foreclose can be filed. In residential foreclosures, mediation or an offer of mediation by the lender is a requirement. So when the suit is filed and the papers are served on the owner of the property, they're also advised that they have the right to request mediation. Mediation means that you sit down with a third party appointed by the administrative office of the court. The mediator attempts to come to a settlement or a resolution. The mediator can't force either party to accept a settlement, he can only suggest and cajole. This is a process that went into effect about two years ago. From my knowledge of it, it has not been terribly successful. Not many people request the mediation, and very seldom does it result in a resolution of the default. Mediation is not required in a commercial foreclosure, only in residential. Once the mediation has occurred, or the borrower has not requested mediation after a certain period of time to do that, then the sale is scheduled, notice is sent to the borrower, and also the ad that you see in the paper is required to be published, advising of the sale and the date of the sale and the terms of the sale. At the sale, it's done by auction. Once the auctioneer finalizes the sale or determines the high bidder, then the sale is final, subject to the right of the borrower or anyone else to object to the sale. Once the sale takes place, the trustee or the SNE doing the foreclosure files a report of sale with the court. When they file that report. When they file that report, a notice goes into the newspaper, giving anyone who has an objection to the sale thirty days after a three notice, three weeks of notice, thirty days after that date to object to the sale. Normally, the objections would be either that the proper notices weren't given or that there was some impropriety in the bidding process, or the auctioneer didn't conduct the auction properly. And a, anyone with an interest in the property can file an objection to the sale. It doesn't happen very often. And of the, the small percentage of times when an objection is filed, most of the time the sale is approved over the objection, because a lot of the objections are, are frivolous and, and not really on sound grounds. Once the sale is ratified, which takes place after this objection period, either no objection is filed, the court ratifies it, or if an objection is filed, the court hears the objection. If they overrule the objection, then the, the sale is ratified. If the court would say there was a deficiency in the conduct of the sale, they could order the property resold. Again, I would venture to say that that happens less than one percent of the time. It's, it's a very rare thing. Maryland law says, once the sale is ratified, the buyer at the, the auction gains equitable title retroactively to the date of, of the sale. It's kind of a weird concept, if you think about it. It's done sixty days after the sale, but once it's done, title actually, equitable title passes to the purchaser at the sale as of the date of sale. Equitable title is similar to, if I have a contract of sale to buy your property, I have a legal right to buy your property and I can prevent you from selling it to someone else. And I can force you to sell it to me if you refuse to do so. So, it's, it's the same, it's not legal title, but it, it is sufficient title recognized in law, I think, to impose upon the purchaser at the foreclosure sale, the obligation to maintain the property and be responsible for the property. Once the ratification occurs, then there is actually settlement on the property and a deed is executed. There are no specific, there's no specific time period in the law, after the ratification of the sale, the settlement has to take place. And occasionally, those doing the foreclosure sale will drag their feet in settling on the property, because the banks really don't want to own these properties. And so, a lot of times, they'll wait to actually transfer the deed and try to find a buyer in the interim. And there is a process for substituting a buyer. So, a bank can buy a property at a foreclosure sale and then find a buyer and then go into the court and say, I found somebody to step into my shoes and they'll buy the property instead of me. And, and then the court signs an order saying, the, the potential buyer, the bank has found, can take the deed rather than the, than the bank. And then, once settlement has taken place, there's a process of reporting the proceeds of sale, the expenses, and then the amount that the bank is claiming is owed. And then, there is an accounting stated by the court auditor that basically lays all this out and then determines whether, if there's money left over, in other words, the proceeds exceed the expenses and what's owed to the bank, that money goes back to the owner of the property. If there's a shortfall, then there is a deficiency determined and the bank has the right to go after the borrower for that deficiency. I'm one of the court auditors and I've been doing it for about thirty-five years. And I would say, there are about, right now, we're averaging about five hundred foreclosures a year. And I'll bet there aren't five out of that five hundred where there's a, a surplus that goes back to the borrower, all the rest are, are deficiencies.
So, we understand that. When we talk about fines or we talk about remediation, what's the word I'm looking at?
Abatement.
Abatement. And we say, well, geez, we'll lodge it against the property. There's no, there's nothing to lodge it against. Right? Well, you, you say, well, we'll put it as a lien on the property. But we're not the first lien on that property, the mortgage is, right?
Right.
And if the sale of the property doesn't even bring enough money to pay off the mortgage, it's not going to take care of any of our liens, correct?
Well, except that if it's added to the tax bill, the, in order for the owner to, to get clear title to the property of the transfer of the deed, they've got to pay the taxes.
And you're allowed to add a penalty? You're allowed to make that into a tax bill?
You're allowed to, you're allowed to add the, the cost of, let me just see how, how it's worded.
If I may, Bill, there's, there's two sections. There's a section in Article fourteen of the Maryland rules that covers foreclosures and what you're able to, to add in terms of abatement of violations and that. We also rely on Chapter two twenty-three of the city code, which is our tax, tax code, which allows charges related to real property to be billed as taxes. So, we have an opinion from Mr. Boyer that we can lien both fees and fines and abatement costs, either through Article fourteen of the Maryland rules or through Chapter two twenty-three of our tax code.
Means the bank has to settle the table of new owner and the owner has to.
Absorb that in certain cases as a part of acquiring the property.
And, and that happens as a matter of routine. We'll get calls from the settlement table to staff, saying, hey, we owe this, how do we, we work it out? And.
Sometimes the realtors, sometimes the realtors absorb it.
Yep.
It's between the parties.
Yes, sir.
Twice, between all three parties. Who absorbs it? We can enforce it.
I mean, normally, the former owner of the property at that point, they're not going to.
They're not going to contribute anything. And that, that's always been my concern with this thing, is it, is, I don't have any desire. It seems to me that, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming ninety-nine percent of every residential property that we would have a problem with is, that's vacant as a foreclosed property.
Not necessarily, based upon the definition of the foreclosure. They may have received a notice of intent.
That's, that's enough for me. But, but it's, it's, these are, we have almost no properties at all that are just up for private sale from people who are planning on selling their home and buying another one and moving out. Almost all of our problem properties are properties that have been vacated due to some type of foreclosure notices or proceeding.
A large percentage, sir. And.
And I just want to make sure that, that it is not the person who has been foreclosed. And, and we've had this discussion and I think you've tried to, to put the right wording in the law. And, and as long as we make that clear, I'm, I'm okay with it.
And, and Jason Morton's here to, to respond, because he, he spoke a couple of weeks ago on, on when we could actually hold the purchaser responsible. I think in layman's terms, oftentimes, we think of selling a property in terms of an arm's length transaction and a deed is recorded, and we think of a property being sold.
Right.
But in the foreclosure process, you have a sale. And whether that gets recorded quickly or over a long period of time, that's not going to have a bearing on, on when we, we hold that purchaser responsible.
Lou, let me clarify one thing, though. The person who will pay this is, is the purchaser of the property. However, that, that can be an expensive sale that could ultimately end up in that deficiency. And so, the bank could pursue.
When you stand there.
The borrower to get it back. Again, the number of deficiencies.
Right.
That are pursued is.
Slim.
So, small that, that it's pretty unlikely in reality that a borrower's going to pay that. Theoretically, that they could, it, they could be sued to pay that, but it doesn't really happen in most.
But that would be after the bank is able to get it to pay us.
Right, right.
So, we'd be first.
Right.
So, good. Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Jason, if you'd step up and you can explain about when it is that the lender or the purchaser would be considered accountable by the city for this ordinance.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having me today. Oh, I'm sorry. Following up on what Bill said, and I think he made this clear, we keep talking about in, in terms of who the purchaser of the foreclosed property is. And, and the vast, vast majority of the cases, it's going to be the lender buying back the property, although anybody can come in and, and bid on that if he wants to. So, I'll talk in terms of the lender, because that's probably going to be the person or the entity that's going to buy back that property. And Bill alluded to this during his presentation. We believe that at the moment of sale would be the time that the lender, who is the purchaser of the property, would be accountable under our vacant structures ordinance as the person that would be responsible for registering the property and complying with the, the terms of the ordinance. I want to take that one step further, excuse me, earlier in the process and say, although the law is unsettled on this, we believe that there are instances where we could pursue the lender even before the sale occurs. Now, the law's unsettled, it would be an aggressive application of the ordinance. And we're talking about rare instances where, for example, the lender has displaced the homeowner. And I think that speaks Councilman Metzner to the evil that you're concerned about. But if you have a lender who has, probably through self-help, evicted the, the homeowner, padlocked the property, prevented that person from, or anyone else from, from being in that property, if that lender has exercised dominion or control, control is the language that we use in the ordinance, that would be an instance where the city could pursue the lender even before sale has occurred. Again, it's going to be rare. It's going to have to be something that.
Well, when you say rare, Jason, keep in mind, if I'm correct, the, the place has to be vacant under residential for how long?
Well, if it's, if it's foreclosed, then it comes into the program immediately.
Right, but it has to be.
Or, or six months.
Well, when you say, so, it comes into the program immediately when foreclosed, how?
If, if the language of the ordinance is that if the, if there is a pending action to foreclose, so going back to Bill's discussion a few moments ago, that the, you know, the homeowner, well, first of all, it has to be vacant or it's not going to be subject.
Well, that's, that's, well, no, that's the point I'm making. So, it's not automatic on foreclosure, it has to be vacant, right?
Has to be vacant. And a, and a pending action to foreclose.
And it has to be vacant for how long?
Six months.
Right.
No.
So, so if it's under foreclosure, vacancy and foreclosure, make it immediately.
Yes.
To the program.
Yes.
Is that what I hear? Okay. And otherwise, six months.
Yes. Well, there's also the bladed condition.
Or pluck.
But what I was saying, with respect to pursuing someone, excuse me, pursuing a lender prior to it having purchased the property back at sale, that would be a rare occurrence. I think it's something that, you know, the department would have to determine that it was appropriate under the circumstances and would perhaps consult with legal counsel and determine if it were. Because we don't want to pursue people who, who should not be registering the properties. And we don't want to bring any kind of action where we don't have a good faith belief that we're going to prevail if, if it ends up in court.
And when, under the statute, does it have to be registered? When it becomes vacant or when it has been vacant for six months?
What we've discussed is for the, under the foreclosure issue, we would consider it foreclosed at that point of sale or when the lender took control, if they took control prior to the sale of the vacant property. Otherwise, if that hasn't happened, it's six months vacant.
So, it would in fact be the lender that we would be expecting to register the property under the foreclosure. Okay.
Well, if I may correct Ms. Martin for a second, I, I think, I think you're, you're in the program if there's a pending action to foreclose and it's vacant.
And it's vacant, right.
It doesn't have to be vacant six months.
No, no, no. That's what Kathy said. If it's vacant and it's foreclosed and pending action and vacant, and then we would be looking to the lender to be the one who registers this.
We would be looking to the lender at the moment of sale and in those rare instances prior to that. Okay? Where the, where the lender is exercising control over that property.
But am I wrong, when I get the notice that my house is being foreclosed on and I move out, am I wrong? Do you all think the lender is exercising control over that property when I go, leave because the lender has told me, I'm foreclosing, I've been to mediation, mediation didn't work, and I've been told, you're out of here? Whether it's formal or informal, it seems to me, the letter of foreclosure and especially post-mediation, I understand they have to go through the mediation process. But it seems to me, if you get the foreclosure notice and you're going through mediation, that if at that stage of the game, you abandon the property, the only people that I can conceive that would be under control would be the bank. Under the theory that the, and I understand the, the title owner still has control to the degree he can enter, he can come and he can go, but he is not going to do one single thing for that property. And if, and that's my concern, Jason, the, the thought that we would anticipate that we're going to pass a statute where the title owner, we would actually be thinking he's going to do something about it. It, it, under the foreclosure aspects, it's all being put on the bank from my end, because it's unrealistic to believe. And, you know, I'm not asking you, but, you know, rhetorically, a lot of these people have already filed bankruptcy too. So, these are not people, and there's very few people in the world that get foreclosed on their home that are quote deadbeat. They're, they didn't make it.
That's a good point, Lou. If bankruptcy is filed, the foreclosure process is stopped dead in its tracks. And the foreclo, then the bankruptcy court has to be petitioned to pass an order to allow the foreclosure to go forward. And so, bankruptcy can delay everything.
Which causes nobody to be controlled except.
One person that we couldn't collect from, and that's a bankruptcy trustee, right?
Yeah.
I mean, at the time of bankruptcy, the bank can't do anything, the homeowner can't do anything to speak of, if he's left, he's left. So, it's just something we have to, to be aware of. I mean, I understand the intent and we have to just work on it.
And from a staff perspective, there's going to be all these different scenarios. And we, we will look at every scenario and work through the uniqueness of, of the different scenarios, ultimately trying to protect the neighborhood. And even if there is an occasion where someone left their property prematurely and we have to send something in their name, the bottom line is, any liens or anything like that, we're not going to be going after them individually. It would be attached to the property and eventually, the purchaser, the lender in most cases, is the one who we're going to recover those funds from.
When you read your definition under owner, while I understand how you're explaining it here to us, I read it to mean all of those parties.
It can be all of those parties.
Okay. So, you're not differentiating. In other words, what I hear you saying is, is in order to satisfy what we're intending to do as part of this ordinance, here's the, the path you're going to take. But when I read the definition of who the owner is, the owner, the definition of the owner doesn't. doesn't designate that that's the path.
Correct.
Because the definition covers all...
So you're going to send notice to everybody? And then everybody's going to be responsible for whatever you're sending the notice for?
Not every property is foreclosed. So this owner definition covers the gambit.
I know, but I read it to mean that even in a foreclosure process, it allows any one of these parties to say, no, you're the owner, no, you're the owner, no, you're the owner. I mean, I'm reading it, any person, partnership, association, company, corporation, or any entity having a legal or equitable interest in or control of a vacant structure, residential, non-rental, sub...
And we have it that broad for all the unique situations. So at some point, the owner of record will not be able to be held responsible, even though in the tax records, it says Joe Smith owns this property.
But clearly, they're all owners under the definition, joint and several.
Yes.
I mean, I read this definition of ownership the same way. The analogy is what we were talking about. Melt. Everybody, everybody's in. It's not one or the other. It's all.
What you're defining sounds like the path that I think we intended to go. But this definition doesn't include that path as you've laid it out.
And I would say it can't. It can't, we can't narrow the definition of owner for then all the different scenarios.
I understand what you're saying. I just think that you're going to run into, it'll be interesting.
If I may speak to that, too. This definition of owner, almost word for word, tracks what we have in the property maintenance code. And as I said, the language that is, the term I used is aggressive before, is the language of control over the property. Because that's where you would bring in potentially a lender who has control over the property. And I guess Lou brings up a good point in terms of saying, well, when do you have control? Is it when you've sent a threatening letter? Is it when the owner has vacated because of that or mediation has failed? My own thought as I sit here is that it's probably going to be something a little bit more adamant on the part of the lender. It's going to be some kind of action that we would feel comfortable going to that lender and saying, look, you've padlocked this building. How is the owner supposed to get back into it? You have put up no trespassing signs to say other people aren't allowed there. You've done some kind of act to indicate that you're more than simply the mortgagie on the property anymore. You are exerting some kind of control, which is more consistent with being an owner than it is with being a lender. And that's when we're going to go after the lenders in that situation.
So we're good for approval next week?
I mean, I'm not. And it has nothing to do with this issue. It's the same questions that I had that I haven't received answer to. And I'd make these three points. The one is, on the non-residential structure, I see that, you know, it says blighted come in automatically, non-residential come in after a period. But how does that work in the face of structures that, like a shopping center? You know, the old Applebee's there on Basil Boulevard. It's within a shopping center. You know, it's a larger corporate entity. I mean, that property is occupied in part. Or, you know, when Wonderbook and Video vacates.
A hundred percent of the property. It's how we've changed it with these modifications.
So it really doesn't matter the condition of the one tooth in a shopping center. That isn't going to fall within this program.
Correct.
No differently than one tooth down here in downtown would fall within the program.
Well, if it's a separate property?
Well, say they got residential up above.
The whole building would have to be vacant with the way we've got the program proposed now. It used to be there was all kinds of, you know, machinations.
Ninety percent of the building can be vacant and in a blighted state as long as one unit is occupied.
It wouldn't be in the vacant structure program. But if you have a unit occupied, it would fall into the rental licensing.
And what about satellite parcels? Not parcels, but satellite pads within a shopping center that's owned by a single owner?
If it's...
A restaurant on a larger shopping center site?
Yeah.
We haven't really explored that at all.
These are things I'm looking at. Because if I'm, if I'm an owner of a property downtown and it's vacant for six months and I'm among eight storefronts, and I've got to pay $1,000 while a shopping center owner who has 70% of his building is completely vacant with no equitable response? I mean, I'd have to question why I'm getting that and not that vacant structure of that location? Whether it's a pad site or a tooth within a shopping center? I mean, I'm looking at the equity issue and I look at some of the shopping centers with, you know, that have that case.
Yeah, we were thinking in terms of single buildings. We didn't, and I see what you're saying about even with the single building, if it's a shopping center, but we didn't think really at all about a shopping center that has the strip as well as several out parcels. We never discussed that.
Well, it depends on if the out parcel is sold or if...
If it's a separate parcel.
You know, in Long Meadow, the CVS and McDonald's are leasing those, their property for 99 years or whatever, so that's not technically owned by McDonald's or CVS.
That's right. So what happens when one of those become vacant and they are a single vacant structure?
If it's on, if it's on a separate parcel.
But if it's not?
If it's not, then it's not in the current...
So can sit there vacant forever as a separate structure? But a property downtown can't? Or, you know, in a neighborhood. A good example is the Corsi's property. I'm just looking at those as, I'm looking at the equity issue. And the second point is, under vacant, non-residential and residential, you've got these criteria. And I still struggle with this crime prevention because I can tell you, I walk a good bit at nighttime. And, you know, any one of these houses I pass, I passed one on Virginia Avenue the other night that's for sale, it's been for sale for two months now. It doesn't have dust to dawn lights. But I can tell you, I can see the front of that door as brightly as I can see that wall right there. I mean, it doesn't need a, it doesn't even have a porch. You know what I mean? Let alone necessity for a porch light. There are trees in front of it, but, you know, it's five feet from the sidewalk. You know, it's not sitting 40 feet back off the public way. There's nothing going on there. We have these requirements for sliding doors to have locking mechanisms, but not the windows. What liability do we have in the event that we say, yeah, it has them, but they weren't engaged? You know, because we're doing some interior inspections now. Where does that fall within our obligations to inspect that those are in a manner in which we're stating they shall be?
Christian, the only issue I would have, the only issue I have with what you're talking about is the definition that requires these places to be vacant for 12 months.
Six months.
With the residential is...
Six months.
Are any of these homes that you're talking about, do you know, have they been vacant for six months?
Well, there's definitely some that have been. I mean, I don't use that as a bad rule of thumb. All I'm saying is some don't need lighting. There are a number, any number of these homes, drive in any of your neighborhoods and you're going to see, a lot of them have some nice decorative trees, larger trees, that would clearly violate having a clear view of the structure from the public sidewalk. I just read these and I walk around, like I said, at nighttime. And, you know, I'm trying to fit these to those scenarios. And I just, I can't, I can't justify, you know, some of that. I mean, are people going to drive around at night and inspect whether the dust to dawn light's on? And what's the necessity of it when it's seven feet from a streetlight? And has no front porch or no impediment because it's three feet off the sidewalk?
I don't know how you're going to pick and choose that because in some areas, you don't have lighting at all. So I mean, that's going to be a hard nut to crack.
I think the argument is it doesn't do any harm to have the dust to dawn lighting.
I guess it does if somebody's selling their house and they're eight months in and all of a sudden they get a notice and they've got to put a porch, install a porch light on the property.
I think some of the answers to Christian's questions can be resolved by revisiting the statute, which indicates not, not what you have to have physically, but what the result has to be. So if the statute said, for instance, that the front of the house has to be visible without additional lighting along that line? Because I hear what you're saying. It is ridiculous to, let's take Mulberry or Locust in the downtown area. To say that that property needs to have dust to dawn lighting when there's not even a front yard? It's right off the sidewalk? But, and that doesn't, that's not what you all are intending. That's not the intention of the statute. The intention...
The first person that gets one of those letters is going to go around to 18 of those properties.
Christian, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. No, I'm not disagreeing with you. What I'm saying is instead of making the requirement that you have certain things, the requirement should be that a goal is achieved. So the front has to be visible from the streets by the police. Not that you have to have dust to dawn lighting, but if that's what it requires to make it visible, then you have to do it.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Because not all ends are the same.
But to just blatantly say that every property has to have this, when in fact, it would be totally ridiculous for some properties to have it, doesn't make sense. What does make sense is to achieve the goal that you're trying to achieve. And that makes all the sense in the world.
So if we amend that section to say that the area has to be visible and have sufficient light?
I just think it has to be consistent and reasonable. Half the people in my street have trees in front of their houses because it deadens the noise of a very busy road and keeps the dust out. And I don't know how you go up to this place and it's, you know, it's been vacant for 10 months and say, ah, that tree's got to go.
No one's saying that trees have to be cut down, though. That's the thing. I mean, it says it has to be visible. So you might have to trim them back.
If you're going to cut a tree up to eight feet high in front of, in front of the house, I'm curious what the provision would be for that.
Well, here's the thing. We're running short on time.
Yeah, we are.
So we can always schedule a work session.
Yeah, I think, I think we should.
Have staff work on some of these considerations and then we'll come back because it doesn't seem like we're going to resolve it this evening. And for next week, could you bring, you know, like a red line? You know, the actual, the whole ordinances with the changes that we're making and whatnot?
Yes, we can email that out in the interim as well. And Councilmember Elshar, if you have additional concerns other than those mentioned, if you can let us and work with that, or if anyone has additional concerns.
And I understand the concerns, but I hope we can, you know, we're always asking staff to do this, address this problem, address these issues. And then we rightfully find things that are difficult and so on and so forth. But at some point, we need to pass and move on. And so I hope we can, you know, find wording that resolves this and satisfies council members. So we can't throw out the good for the perfect. So, you know, I'm willing to keep working on it, but let's move forward.
Right.
I understand. But we also, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Figure the whole lighting aspect.
Mr. City Administrator, any comments tonight?
None from me.
Let me go, let me go.
Please go.
Okay, there's a clothing drive for children. We need sizes zero, newborn to 2X adult for children zero through 21 years of age. All donations go free of charge to Washington County Children in Need. Thank you for your help. It's located at 131 West North Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland. Phone number 301-671-2014. Or they can contact me at 301-790-3839. We're now coming into a crucial time of the year. That clothing is needed. Thank you.
Mr. Metzner?
The park was absolutely wonderful this weekend. I don't know what I was more impressed by, the sculpture or candidly, Amanda Miller's story.
It's good stuff. Mr. Bragg, comics tonight. Mr. Munson?
I have a comment. Trying to protect the neighborhood, the neighborhoods in a municipality is one of the most important functions